I will now call the August 20th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. We're gonna have a young man from Troop 332, First United Methodist Church come up. I'm gonna have you come up here and stand. Yeah, come on up, come on. Yeah, just kinda right here, no, right here in front of me.
There you go.
There you go. See, that was easy, right? Now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna stand, observe a moment of silence, and when I turn around and look at you, then you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay? You got thumbs up. All right, let us stand.
I love you.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You made me seated? See, that was easy, right? He was a little nervous about it, but I knew he could do it. So you come back and see us again, okay? All right. Next, we have the consent agenda unless their ideas would be full, except for motion for approval.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levessy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on a vacation of alley, way easement, and street right-of-way easement at 106 and 110 Southwest 8th Street.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, applications with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, letter from residents Drost and Jansen, and bill vacating street and alley rights of way. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Madam Mayor. City?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request for vacation of street and alley rights of way, east of Southwest 8th Street between Main Street and Southwest Jones Street. The streets and alleys were plowed as part of Cabell's Edition, which was recorded in 1888, which includes Southwest Jones Street and east of 8th Street and a north-south and east-west alley around the perimeter of the subject parcels to be developed. None of the rights of way is currently being utilized as public right-of-way. Over time, the property to the south of Jones Street right-of-way has utilized the areas of private driveway and constructed part of a deck and detached storage building in the right-of-way. Vacating the right-of-way will allow the proposed residential development to proceed with a private access drive rather than a public street, which is required to be much wider. Reducing the access drive width and vacating the right-of-way will allow the vacated area to become private property, which would put the deck and accessory structure back on private property. The applicant must work with the property owner to the south on a shared access easement so that all owners adjacent to the drive can access Southwest 8th Street. At the Planning Commission public hearing on August 13th, one of the owners of the property to the south had concerns regarding access and requested that the applicant meet with her to discuss. Both staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the vacation with two conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were there any questions from the council? Seeing none, is the applicant a representative, like to come and speak? I'm gonna ask you to be sworn in.
If you'd like to swear in the hearing about giving this case to the truth, so you can.
I do. Mike Yancek, dwellings by design KC 1909, Northwest 75th Street, Kansas City, Missouri 64151. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No questions from the council? Well, yes, swearing in, was, I guess it is?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition two? Opposition two? We're closing this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4587, an ordinance vacating an existing street right-of-way for Southwest Jones Street, east of Southwest 8th Street, and alley rights of way for a north-south alley and an east-west alley generally located east of Southwest 8th Street between Southwest Jones Street and West Main Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Their second?
Second.
Discussion? On in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4587, an ordinance vacating an existing street right-of-way for Southwest Jones Street, east of Southwest 8th Street, and alley rights of way for a north-south alley and an east-west alley generally located east of Southwest 8th Street between Southwest Jones Street and West Main Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levessy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4754.
Next, we have a couple of public hearings that we're gonna combine. The public hearing on a rezoned Hootaw Acres as well as a plan development concept plan for Hootaw Acres. We would take them up separately, but the public hearing will combine.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter the record for each, the rezoning and plan development concept plan public hearings. We have two exhibits for each. For the rezoning, we have Planning Commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, PowerPoint presentation by Powell CWM Inc., email from Chris Hendricks with maps, email from Kevin Johnston, email from Tommy Frevert, I'm sorry if I said that incorrectly, email from Curtis Johnson in bill approving the rezoning, and Exhibit Number Two is an amended PowerPoint presentation by Powell CWM Inc. For the plan development concept plan, we have the following exhibits to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, PowerPoint presentation by Powell CWM Inc., email from Chris Hendricks with maps, email from Kevin Johnston, email from Tommy Frevert, email from Curtis Johnson, and bill approving plan development concept plan. And Exhibit Number Two for the plan development concept plan is the amended PowerPoint presentation from Powell CWM Inc. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mike, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, Mike Malin, on behalf of the city. The Hootaw Acres rezoning and plan development concept plan requests are property generally located at the north and west of the intersection of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway and southeast Major Road. Proposals of rezoning from SF7 or single-family residential and planned residential overlay to TF or two-family with the additional plan development designation and a plan development concept plan. The proposal is on approximately 14 acres. The proposed rezoning, again, would change the zoning from SF7 to TF. It would remove the existing planned residential overlay that was approved as part of the original Colonial Highlands Plan residential overlay many years ago and would establish a PD zoning district. The project, again, is known as Hootaw Acres, which is on the west side. The next application across the street is Hootaw Ridge, just wanna make that distinction. Proposed development would include 24 duplex buildings for a total of 48 residential units that are intended to be part of an age-restricted community that is also low-maintenance and provides ample amenities for the residents of the community, including clubhouse, community garden, dog park, bocce ball courts, and landscape buffering along Adams Dairy Parkway. This is a map of the proposed site, highlighted in black and white here. The surrounding zoning to the west is SF7, which is the Hootaw Ridge project, SF7, or to the east, I'm sorry, SF7 to the west, SF7 planned development to the south, and residential state to the north along Adams Dairy Parkway. This Jackson County parcel here is unincorporated, and it's a site of an electrical substation. Property is currently vacant. This little bite mark, if you will, out of it here along Major Road is a detention pond that serves the project to the south. It is not a part of this project, so I just wanna make that clear. This is the proposed site plan with north being to your left on the screen. Major Road runs along the right-hand side here, and Adams Dairy Parkway is on the top. Here is that detention pond for the development to the south. Two access points will serve the property from Major Road, one on the west and one on the east, and there's a single point of access proposed on Adams Dairy Parkway. Internal public street system runs throughout the site. The duplex buildings are arranged along that internal public street and are proposed to be located along that internal street away from the perimeter of the site to give the property more enhanced buffering along the perimeter of the site. Again, there are 24 duplex buildings, each with two units for 48 lots. This duplex project is a little bit different, and part of the PD request is that a normal duplex is one duplex building on its own lot. This development proposes multiple duplex buildings on one lot, or actually, there are four lots, so dispersed among the four lots, and that is proposed to be able to provide the low-maintenance aspect where the owner of the duplex owns the unit, but the common homeowners association, HOA, owns and maintains the balance of the property to create a cohesive maintenance and upkeep package for the community. Open space is distributed throughout the project, including buffering along Adams Dairy Parkway, a landscaped open space and detention tract here along the north end of the project, multiple amenities, including a clubhouse, bocce ball courts, community garden, dog park, walking trail, and gazebo. The base zoning district of two-family dictates the open space requirements of 15% of the overall site at approximately 14 acres. That would result in a little over two acres of open space being required as part of the site plan. The applicant has provided in excess of six and a half acres of open space. The duplex building types, neighborhood lot would comprise the building typology under the Unified Development Code. These are the conceptual preliminary elevations as provided to exemplify the quality and the use of different materials along the front and side and rear elevations, as well as the clubhouse to the bottom. Currently proposed are two different types of building designs, a type B and a type A, and I'll let the applicant discuss that more. Parking is provided for each unit. Under the UDC, each unit is required a minimum of two spaces. This development is proposing a two-car garage for each duplex unit and enough room to have two additional parking spaces in the driveway leading to each garage, so each duplex unit will have four parking spaces. Again, the conceptual architecture has a variety of materials, including masonry, a variety of masonry, and siding, as well as asphalt shingles. Final architecture will be designed, or will be determined at the plan development final plan. Landscape plan has been submitted. It is preliminary, and a final landscape plan will be required with the final plan development final plan. Landscaping buffering along Adams Dairy Parkway is a buffer type C, as well as individual street or street tree requirements for the internal public streets. The PD is being requested to provide alternative development standards and would otherwise be required under code. As I previously mentioned, typically, under the Unified Development Code, a duplex is dictated to be one duplex building on one lot, or even you could have two, a party line subdivision between that where each unit of the duplex is on its individual lot. However, this development, in order to achieve the low-maintenance aspect of the community, which is somewhat unique, proposes to have multiple duplex buildings on one lot. As such, they've requested modifications to setbacks, such as the front setback, side setbacks, rear setbacks, and corner side setbacks that would normally be applicable to a building on its individual lot. In lieu of those setbacks, they proposed a 20-foot minimum building separation between all units, which staff feels is appropriate. In terms of the front setback, which is normally required to be 25 feet, they've requested to have that be able to be reduced to 20 feet on certain buildings so that every other building or a combination thereof would have a different front setback from between 20 and 25 feet to help provide variation in the streetscape as you go down the streets. The, as, in order to achieve this, some of the lot drainage requirements under the UDC for the duplexed neighborhood lot would need to be removed. The lot area size requirements under the UDC would need to be removed. I mentioned the front setback and the removal of the side rear and corner side setbacks and move the building separation. And two others are a reduction in the amount of street trees being provided along Adams Dairy Parkway from the required 60-plant units for every 100 feet, linear feet to 55-plant units for every 100 feet, and this is being requested due to the existing ample vegetation that is along Adams Dairy Parkway and to be able to incorporate that existing mature vegetation into the site plan. And the final request is to modify this turning radius here that comes off of Adams Dairy Parkway from the standard code requirement of 185 feet to reduce that down to 75 feet in order to make this turning, this public access work, as well as slow down traffic as it enters from Adams Dairy Parkway. That is a quick summary of the project. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning based upon the criteria in the Unified Development Code, and I'll go through those now. Proposed rezoning from SF7 PRO to TFPD is in accordance with the comprehensive plan designation of the property, which is mixed-density neighborhood, which are areas for residential living and a neighborhood pattern with a range of housing formats. That does include small-scale multi-unit housing, such as two, three, and fourplexes, and a development pattern that is compatible in scale and retains a similar relationship to a single-family home. The appropriate locations for such multi-unit housing is at the end caps of larger streets or at the neighbor, or at the intersection of two important streets within the city. Staff does feel that this location at Adams Dairy Parkway and Major Road is one of those locations, and thus, the comprehensive plan designation is appropriate for this rezoning. Proposed zoning does serve as a transition from the arterial street to residential projects to the west, and therefore furthers the intent of the two-family zoning district. Proposed rezoning with the accompanying PD concept plan provide for a high-quality level of urban design through the building forms, propose the site design and development amenities provided for the residents, and the precedents that might result from approval will help establish a high level of development quality that further enhances the overall area. The proposed rezoning is compliant with all aspects of the Unified Development Code except as proposed as part of the concept plan or the PD concept plan. Proposed rezoning does not have any negative impact of the ability of the city to provide any services, programs that may be required if this is approved. Approval of the rezoning will allow for the development of a vacant parcel with residential dwelling units that are compatible in size and scale to adjacent properties, and thus will not negatively impact the condition or value of property in the area, nor will it impact negatively the ability of adjacent undeveloped property to be developed in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which also has the designation of mixed-density neighborhood. The proposed rezoning is justified by a change in conditions since the existing zoning was approved since the time of the original Colonial Highlands planned residential overlay, single-family detached, as well as rental duplex housing has been a large part of the residential development pattern in Blue Springs. Proposed project is unique in that it is, provides owner-occupied, low-maintenance-provided duplex units. That is a unique housing product. It will allow residents of Blue Springs to continue living within the city as their housing needs change over time. And the application is consistent with adopted policies of the city to provide a range of housing options for neighbors and citizens of the city. Those are the rezoning criteria. The PD concept plan criteria, there are four or five of them, pardon me, proposed PD concept plan provides a unique housing product in the city with common open space throughout the project that is in a coordinated master plan, which is one of the criteria to provide a unique housing, or a unique project. The benefits and the flexibility being requested as part of the PD promote the general public health, safety, and welfare of the community and of the areas immediately adjacent to the project. This proposed development maximizes open space around the perimeter of the site and internally throughout the site, both with the amenities, as well as takes advantage and incorporates the detention pond area that serves the project to the south. The benefits of the flexibility meet or exceed the intent of the base zoning districts and would create a cohesive unit, or create cohesive development with high-quality building design and amenities. The plan development concept plan generally reflects sound planning and urban design principles and found criteria is that a plan development must meet the criteria of a zoning amendment, which I went through before. Based upon the review criteria of the zoning and the PD concept plan, staff recommends approval of both. The Planning Commission at the August 13th meeting recommended denial of both applications by a vote of six to five. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions before turning it over to the applicant and their team.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Could you expand on that, the Planning Commission? You spent a lot of time talking about why the city wants it, but what did the Planning Commission see differently?
At the Planning Commission meeting, there was not a substantial amount of conversation from the Planning Commissioners to which staff could tell why they voted the way they did.
Okay. Your Honor, this property, the ownership is different than the applicant. Could we understand the ownership of this property?
Absolutely. I apologize. The owner of the, the owner of the property is the land bank of Blue Springs.
Which is, isn't that us, citizens?
It's us.
It's owned by the city.
Yes, to whatever extent the city and the land bank intermingle, yes.
You want to expand just a little bit to make sure people understand? The land bank property that's in the city of Blue Springs is a result of people not paying their taxes on the ned and the property taxes. And so after they go, what, three years is it without paying their taxes? It used to go into the Jackson County land bank, and we passed, due to state stature changes, we were able to bring that land to the city instead of Jackson County having control over it, which I think was a positive thing, so.
Okay.
Would you like to add anything, our city attorney?
I would just add that when the property is owned by the city land bank, it is exempt, and so no taxes are assessed or paid on the property until it becomes, it goes back into private ownership.
But let me add to that. Although it's exempt, the city is still having to take up the slack for retiring that bond that put the ned in. So it's costing the city to sit there with that property.
Yeah.
And once we sell it, then it goes on a tax roll.
Right.
Right. Wanted to make sure we cleared that up.
Thank you for that clarification for the question. I did forget to mention that the property is owned by the land bank and is being proposed for development by JW Larkin Properties, so that is a separate entity.
All right. On the, up there, I think it says page 167 we're on. Can you go to that page 157? I think I have a question there. Yeah, maybe it's up one more page. Try one more. Maybe it was down one page from there. Yeah, there it is. In the box there, it says land use, and it says, originally you said 24 two-family units. It says 48 two-family units.
There are 48 two-family dwelling units.
So 48 two-family is 96 total units?
No, there are 24 buildings with two units per building for a total of 48 units. The two-family is to describe the type of unit. It's not a single-family detached unit. It's a two-family unit, but there are 48 residential units proposed.
I mean, I can see how that could be interpreted both ways, and my history of interpretation has been that whether it's staffs or whether it's the applicant, it generally ends up being in favor of the applicant. So that 48 two-family units is, is just 24, 24 units?
24 buildings.
24 buildings.
48 residential units.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come and be sworn in, or representative?
Bring up the slide.
Do you sound worried, Congressman, about giving this case to the truth, so you can?
I do.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and Council. My name is Jeremy Powell. I'm with Powell CWM Inc. Our office is located at 3200 South State Route 291 in Independence, Missouri. I am here tonight to represent Justin Larkin and JW Properties in the change of zoning request for Hootaw Acres, and also after this one, the Hootaw Ridge. My client is requesting the property on the opposite side to be rezoned as well, and I, I'm sorry. I know that we're not discussing the Hootaw Ridge at this moment, but I would like to draw your attention to the lot that's covered, colored in pink in the ridge and let you know that this three-acre tract is where Mr. Larkin will be building his personal residence. My architectural team has begun the design of this house, and we estimate the construction cost to be in the million-dollar range. I only point that out to show you that he is truly invested in the quality of both Hootaw Acres is approximately 14 acres, and as you can see, it's an odd-shaped parcel. It sits lower than Adams Dairy and the existing detention basin. There will be a lot of infrastructure dirt movement to make this site work, and construction costs will be substantial. So working with the, closely with the city planning staff, we have came up with the community that is being presented to you tonight. Hootaw Acres will be an age-restricted development consisting of 24 two-family buildings or 48 units. These units will be owner-occupied, and the community will be a low-maintenance, and there will be over six and a half acres of open space with many amenities. The open space and amenities will be maintained by the homeowners association. As you can see from these preliminary elevations, we are proposing an upscale two-family dwellings. Each unit will have a starting price of around $300,000 per unit, or $600,000 a building, and the average square foot cost of $200. These units will not be rental at this price point. You just couldn't get the rents that you would need in Blue Springs at that price point. Tonight, you will hear the opposition state that Mr. Larkin will remove the age restriction and make this a free-for-all if he doesn't get enough pre-sale. The fact of the matter is whether this is age-restricted or not, the residents in this community are buying these units and are looking for a low-maintenance community with amenities and are buying beautiful homes and upgraded finishes. Those buying these units will take no less pride in it than a single-family dwelling. You may also hear that the, this community will make the surrounding property values go down. This is opinion and not a fact. Mr. Larkin will address comps and pricing in his presentation. Tonight, we are proposing two different elevations and four color schemes. All units will be three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, and a full basement. The main level will be roughly 1,500 square feet with a total improved area. Once the basement is finished, it's about 3,000. No identical two units will be built side to side. To avoid the army barracks look that you see in many two-family communities, we are proposing alternating them from a 20 to a 25-foot setback to break up the garages as you drop down the streets. Even with the 25- There will be a 21-foot and a standard parking stall is 18-foot. During the planning commission meeting last Monday, the only feedback that we received was from Mr. Phillips and his concern was that alternating every other unit would set one elevation back and the other front. At that time, if we move forward in the process with the final development plan, we will be proposing a third elevation to avoid that step-backs 1-2, 1-2 appearance. This community is full of amenities, a clubhouse, six and a half acres of open space, free of any improvements except for amenities, around 1,600 linear feet of walking trails, community gardens, bocce ball courts, dog parks, and gazebos. I'd like to note that only 2.09 acres or 15% of open space is required by code, but with this PD and the zero lot line, we're able to provide 46% of overall property and The clubhouse in this community will provide the residents with a place to gather and connect. The clubhouse will be over 2,000 square feet and have a game room, billiards, arts and crafts, multi-use meeting room and kitchen fireplace. I've also brought a few renderings of some of the other amenities, the gazebo and walking trails, the community gardens and pergolas, the dog park, and the bocce ball courts. On August 8, we held a community meeting to make sure that this development, that this development fit the surrounding neighborhoods. We had approximately 17 people attend that meeting and both Houdaw Acres and Houdaw Ridge was discussed. During that meeting, there were a few concerns that were brought up and discussed in detail. They were the existing drainage issues and the impact that this development will have on them, observing the existing tree line that separates Willow Tree and Houdaw Ridge, concerns that this development will not be age-restricted, and a fear that this development will become rentals. Stormwater management is a concern in all developments and we, our firm takes this very seriously when planning a development. There's an unknown tributary that runs through Willow Tree that we've been told has topped its bakes about six times a year and many trees are washed down and causes blockage at the culvert pipe at the north end of Willow Tree, which is off the screen here. This is your unnamed tributary. It is not city-maintained because it is on private property, is my understanding. The streets in Willow Tree are asphalt roads, no curb and gutters, there's no road ditches, so the rainwater runs the streets and puddles in low spots. It is my understanding this development was developed in Jackson County and then annexed into the city. And unfortunately, our development will not solve these existing problems. Our design will do everything it can to not increase any of the negative impacts. Some of the things that we see in this preliminary phase of the project that we can help, there are three existing area inlets, one here, here, and here, that are collecting rainwater on the west side of the Parkway and piping it over to the east side. And this water runs directly through Willow Tree and is not controlled. We are proposing eliminating these inlets and detaining the water on the west side of the Parkway and the detention basin here, and we're also proposing a detention basin on the east side in the ridge at this location. You will hear tonight that this development will increase the runoffs through Willow Tree. The fact is that currently, all water running to and through Willow Tree is uncontrolled. Since we are in the entitlement phase of the project, the exact design of the stormwater system has not been completed, but I can say the design and construction of all stormwater management will be in accordance with the APWA 5600 and any additional requirements of Blue Springs. On the ridge, we will be designing both a open channel and an enclosed stormwater system to convey the stormwater through the development. The stormwater will be, the stormwater basins will be designed that there is no increase in peak flows and accommodate the 100-year flood event. And I'd like to note, as a condition of approval of the final development plan, we will be required to prepare a complete stormwater management plan and report, and this will be reviewed and approved by the city public works department. Additionally, we will be required to perform a traffic impact study for this development and also we'll need to include the ridge. This study will be performed by a third-party firm that specializes in traffic engineering. And if the report finds additional improvements are required or the proposed drive location on Adams Dairy needs to be relocated, we will have to make these modifications to the final development plan. Our real estate team believes that this development will sell and provide the residents with a housing option that is not currently available in Blue Springs. Again, I want to stress this community will be owner-occupied and restriction will be put in place to keep it that way. I would also like to clarify to the opposition that we are not seeking a straight two-family zoning, where we are able to do whatever we want as long as it stays within the zoning requirements. The planned development zoning requires us to build what is approved and major deviations from the approved development plan will require us to amend the plan and go back in front of both the planning commission and the council. In closing, we, along with planning staff, believe that this development fits the character of the surrounding neighborhood, consistent with the goals and objective of the comprehensive plan and code of ordinance of Blue Springs, and will not be a detrimental effect to the properties surrounding. This development matches the trend in nearby developments and there are adequate public facilities to serve this development. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions. I would also like a chance to rebut opposition if possible.
Any questions from the council?
I don't have a question. I just want for you to tell me again. So these homes, the half of this duplex will be sold for $300,000 and it's 1,500 square feet?
Correct.
And do you fully expect to sell 1,500 square feet in Blue Springs for $300,000?
We do. This development, there's one currently in Lee's Summit on Woods Chapel Road and is currently sold out and is a trail of Park Ridge. And our real estate team believes that they will get those price points in Blue Springs.
And what makes them, what makes them different? And what would warrant the $300,000 price tag on that?
Simply the appearance, the materials, the location. The Houdaw Ridge, we're looking at a minimum of a square foot of 2,400 in the residential units. We have Willow Tree, which is an upscale development, and we believe that that will, along with the amenities and the finishes in this duplex design, will get that price point.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Levesey and then Councilman Kayla.
I've got a couple of questions, actually. I see the plans you've proposed here for Houdaw Acres is the two-family, 48 units. Houdaw Ridge, I see right about 30 units.
Thirty-one, yeah.
And that would be the 2,400 minimum.
Yes.
So currently, as it's zoned single-family, how many units do you feel like you could build on Houdaw Acres or Houdaw Ridge, that's current zoning?
I don't know cost-wise if Houdaw Acres would be feasible in a single-family. With land acquisition, approximately $1.2 million of infrastructure and then an additional $180,000 improvement for off-site on Major Road, which we will be building west of this property. Since the developer to the south has already put in, well, Sully actually put in Major Road.
Right.
We were responsible for our half, which we will be building to the west.
So you're saying however number of single-family units you could build in Houdaw Acres, you'd have to sell them for like a million dollars each?
A lot, yeah, would be substantial.
Okay. But you have no idea, just in general, what kind of price point you'd be selling those homes for if they were single-family?
I think we ran a minimum.
About 700 minimum is what I heard, okay. And then same thing, so it's currently, your plan is 30 units on Houdaw Ridge. Any idea how many you could build there for current zoning?
Current zone is SFPRO. We are seeking an SFPD zone.
Okay.
So we're not looking to change the zoning to anything but the single-family and to remove the PRO.
From Colonial Highlands?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Kayla?
For $300,000, my understanding is that by your statement, that will adequately park a car in that driveway? So in other words, for $300,000, I'm only going to be able to park two cars in the driveway? Where are you going to park guests or anyone else that has another vehicle?
There is a two-car garage and two-car driveway.
So, again, I would have to have my car inside the garage in order to have more of multiple cars to come visit or, because at 18 feet, Mr. Chris Sandy could tell me different, but 18 feet is a vehicle and you said 21 feet approximately.
Correct.
Well, you're going to have four feet back with a sidewalk and then that becomes a violation.
No, to avoid the sidewalk.
Okay, so you're 21 feet from the sidewalk?
That's correct, to the front of the garage is 21 feet.
Okay.
I guess on top of that, you're saying all of the units will have double car garage? I thought I saw some singles in there.
No, they are, all two-car garages, three bathrooms, two baths, and a full basement in every unit.
Anyone else? Matt, thank you. Would the developer like to come and further expand on what's already been said? If you do, would have you come and be sworn in?
Justin Larkin, 804 Southeast Elizabeth Street, Blue Springs, Missouri. Okay. How's everyone doing?
Good.
I just wanted to come up and give a little history about the project, kind of how we came up with the idea. Really, with the property, the shape, the size, sat down with the real estate team. We knew what we were going to do on the other side of Adams Dairy, but again, on the west side, we talked to the real estate team and we tried to come up with the best ideas as we could, looking at something that possibly Blue Springs didn't necessarily have at the time. My father-in-law is the one that actually brought it up, 62-years-old, thinking about downsizing, either small home, small paired home type is what he was looking for, and so this is what we explored. We found over off of Woods Chapel, again, Trails of Park Ridge, which is over there, was kind of an ideal fit. We explored it, the quality, you know, the interior quality, the exterior quality, and really, we did our research on who was actually buying these homes and found that, you know, it was something that Blue Springs didn't necessarily have, something that I thought we could build, make a very nice product, but also, again, something that I would be willing to move across the street from. So again, we looked at 1,500-square-foot units, looking at about $300,000 a unit. Now, to the question about whether or not we can get that property, I have pulled some comps and actually, there is three units over in Trails of Park Ridge in the last two years that have sold over $300,000. The first level on those units is 1,324 square feet. So again, it's there, the demand is there, and we have, my real estate team will actually get up and talk about that as well. Again, 55 and over is what we're going for. It's not something that's really flexible. I know in the planning and zoning meeting, there was some misconceptions that were discussed about our meeting with Willow Tree. There was some quotes, actually, about whether or not if I didn't sell units quick enough, it would be a free-for-all and I would be selling to whoever would be willing to give me money, which is not true, and that I would get rid of the 55 and over requirement at the drop of a hat if there wasn't enough money for me. What we discussed was the fact that if Houdaw Acres doesn't work, we're not going to go through with it at all, because I know as an investor that at those price points, you're not going to be able to rent those units out. The yield just will not be there, the return on investment's not there, it's really not possible. And then in looking at building smaller homes, starter homes, to your point as well, we found that just with the infrastructure cost, Major Road, the NID payments, that we were going to have to sell lots at a minimum of $55,000 to $60,000, which is not competitive with what Sully's doing south of us, it's just not. So again, this is really what we came up with. I've got comps if anybody would like to see them, but again, what I did is I looked at comps for Trails of Park Ridge, which is right off of Woods Chapel, the three units over there that have sold in the last two years. I pulled comps from Parkway Estates, which if everyone knows is right there on Moreland Adams Dairy. Parkway Villas is the maintenance-free community right there, so I pulled comps on those homes, all averaging, again, about $120 per square foot and above. And when you compare those to the square footage that you find over at Trails of Park Ridge, Trails of Park Ridge is $150 and above or higher, and they don't have the amenities that we are proposing. So again, this is the research we've done with this project and, again, this is what we're trying to put together in building Houdaw Acres out. So I'd be willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilman Levesey?
I was just going to ask, just based on the address you gave, are you a Blue Springs resident?
I am.
Yeah, I noticed that. And what other projects have you done? Have you done projects in town before?
Gray Valley.
Ones your representative mentioned, were those yours as well or just?
I own a lot of property in Gray Valley, or in Blue Springs, commercial, residential. I've developed in Gray Valley, currently developing in Gray Valley. Want to stay in Blue Springs. This project was about building my residence for me and my four kids. I mean, I got three, one on the way, three in the school system. I want to be here for a while.
Have you ever done anything on this scale that's similar that, you know, you mentioned comps of other projects? Have you done something like this where you know you've sold at these levels?
Oh, at the price per unit?
Yeah.
No, we've done smaller lots in Gray Valley, again, just based on the need and demand. We basically developed in Gray Valley what the community needed and that was, you know, a good fit. That's kind of how I look at these things.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to the public. Anyone like to speak in support of?
I was going to say, Your Honor, one of the things that staff didn't mention that I know Councilman Culpepper was involved in is just last month in July, there was a meeting at Timothy Lutheran where our city invited the community in that vicinity to talk about land use and the future of that area. So, you might have those. Yeah, I wonder if there's any, I heard this particular proposal was discussed at that, so Councilman Culpepper, can you elaborate?
Well, the majority of the people that were there were pretty adamant about not wanting any sort of multifamily, whether you call it two-family or three-family, four-family, whatever. They would like single-family homes. They, and I will tell you, some of them live in the county, they're not Blue Springs residents. However, they may not always be in the county, they may come into the city. But that was the general feeling. They did not want two-family homes. They wanted to have single-family residents.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Speaking in support of, I believe it's you, Mr. Groves?
Yes. My name is Sally Groves. My address is 6904 South Buckner Tarzney Road, Oak Grove, Missouri, 64075. I have a 40-year licensed Realtor and I have a team that's three-generation and we are Justin's marketing team. We have 95 years' experience combined. You can ask me about drainage, I know nothing, but you can ask me about real estate and I do know real estate. Quite frankly, when Justin and I started talking about this single-family attached housing a few months ago, I was excited because my daughter Vicki and I had been looking everywhere in Blue Springs to find single-family attached housing that had some green with it, and there was nothing. There's a row of single-family attached housing in front of Stone Creek, just off of Seven Highway, but there's no green and there's just one row of houses and it just felt, sells so fast. Quite frankly, when Justin and I started talking about this single-family attached housing a few months ago, I was excited because my daughter Vicki and I had been looking everywhere in Blue Springs to find single-family attached housing that had some green with it. And there was nothing. There's a row of single-family attached housing in front of Stone Creek, just off of Seven Highway. But there's no green and there's just one row of houses and it just felt so fast you cannot believe it. And so we started looking and there wasn't anything there. When Justin brought the concept into my office, I could have screamed with joy. There's such a need for single-family attached housing, that they don't exist, they're just not there. And I don't know bocce ball, I don't know about that, but I do know about $300,000 for this is absolutely not going to be a problem at all. And I have an example to tell you that I absolutely did not plan. But I have this couple that lived in the parks and I sold their house 12 years ago. They went to Woodmore and Independence, which is single-family attached housing. Really nice, but it's very, very much on top of each other, it's very hilly. And there really isn't any green. And she cuts, about several months ago, she called me, she said, Sally, we need green, we need green. I said, okay. We've looked all over Blue Springs because they really wanted to come home. And there isn't anything out here to show them. And so everybody, every time we have a staff meeting, I say, don't forget, I have two single-family attached buyers. I need them a home. And so she really gave up on Blue Springs and she didn't want to stay in Independence, which is where she is. So I said, well, how about Country Meadows? I know that it's not Blue Springs, but I give up, I totally give up. And so I told her about Justin's idea and how excited I was about it, but she didn't want to wait and build. So tonight about 4:00, I got a phone call from one of our team members, we have a four-team, and said that one of the agents in our office had just listed a single-family attached dwelling in Country Meadows. I called her up and I said, would you be interested? And she said, well, I give up, let's go. Took her out there and we, I told her, I said, there'll be five, four to five contracts on this house by nightfall. And as we were leaving, somebody else was waiting to come in. And I went on the market at 4:30 in the afternoon and this was like 20 to 5:00. And we rushed back to the office. I left Vicki finishing up the contract so I could come to council meeting. But folks, I'm telling you, at the 50, 55 and older, they need a place like this. They need the green space. I don't know if they need bocce ball or not, but probably. They need things to, they need things where it's a home, single-family attached. On our multiple list sheets, what we turn in, we have several different areas that we put down that the house is. And if we have single-family homes, it wants to know, are they attached? And I think that's an awful lot of the problem here because these are single-family attached houses. They aren't duplexes, they aren't fourplexes, they're single-family, they're homes, they're people's homes. They are attached, just like what my daughter and I want, really, really bad. And we, there's nothing in Gray Valley, there's a little bit in Blue Springs, but nothing that we really care about. This should be the answer, to actually think about it, should be the answer to a lot of people's housing needs. As far as values, let me tell you, I sure know that. And I went to a computer and I went to an appraiser class last Thursday. And I said, with this on my mind, because when Justin told me it had been voted down by the council, I thought, or by the planning and zoning, there was no way. And I said to the appraiser, a little one-on-one, I said, I want to ask you a question. Tell me what this would do to surrounding areas? And he said, well, what do you think it would do? And I said, well, I don't know, I want you to tell me. He said, well, it certainly won't affect their value. If anything, he said, a place like that with the amenities that it has should increase the whole value of the whole area. Over here in Eagles Ridge, you have rental duplexes there. I have resold, resold houses in Eagle Ridge and they all made a profit. And how do I know that? Because I know what they paid for them, I can go back and look. And every one I've sold has made a profit. And you've got, what, two streets, three streets of rentals there? But they look nice, but there is such a need for single-family attached housing. You've got more and more people, and okay, if somebody says, well, why don't you do villas? Folks, we're trying to keep this price point around $300,000. You can't afford a villa in that subdivision. You cannot do it. But I'm telling you right now, there is a tremendous need. Like I say, I had two buyers right now that everybody in the world's been trying to help me find something for. It's, this is an awesome town. I love Blue Springs. By the way, I've helped bring a lot of people in here over the years too. So it's a great town to live in. I hated to sell these people a house out of town, but there wasn't anything that they could buy in town. And the single-family attached housing over 55, there's a huge need for.
Okay, Councilman Culpepper?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
What was the price point of these houses that you said there were multiple offers on?
Oh, the one tonight, the one I, tonight I had, they would go to 300, we went at 255 because there wasn't anything else.
And I would like someone to tell me, I've been doing this a long, long time. And I would like someone to tell me the difference between a duplex and a single-family attached house. To me, they're the same thing.
They aren't, they aren't.
I need explanation then because, all right, I look at a lot of this stuff.
When you talk about the single-family attached housing, you're really talking about a house that a person would live in, raise their fam, well, not raise their family, but welcome their grandkids in, that is attached to another house, usually for the safe costs. When you talk about a duplex, and by the way, duplex only means two, it could be two upstairs units, it can be two anyway. Duplex just means two. And that's, you can call this a duplex if you want, but it really isn't. And the reason for that is because it is a home that's attached to another home, where a duplex is usually a rental.
When I look at a building and it's a duplex, it's two, two single families that are attached together. I don't think whether it's rented or owned really determines how you classify the label on a building. And I just, I just think it's a misnomer, any more than I think there's a difference between city homes and apartments. And we've had that go around here too. These are still, to me, they're still duplexes. They're two individual units that are attached.
Heartland MLS, which is what we put our information into and get our information out of, they have a designation duplex, triplex, fourplex. They have a designation single-family. And then over here, right next to single-family, you're supposed to check if it's attached. There's a bit, they assume there's a big difference.
Well, they may assume for selling points, pardon? They may assume that for a selling point. But as an individual looking at that building, when I look at this building, it still looks to me like a duplex. So, you know, you can call it whatever you want to call it, but, yeah. And I appreciate the information on the selling value on the other, thank you.
Councilman Carter?
Have you or and/or Justin done a demographic study as to where we are in Blue Springs and what the housing options need to be moving forward?
Right, we have, we've had many meetings about this, my team and Justin. And there was, in Jackson County alone, now this is all ages, and I'm telling you this to get to where I need to be. There are 250,000 people in Jackson County renting. Of the 250,000 people that are renting, there are 63,000 people that are able to buy in several different price ranges and able to buy, can't find it, don't, have given up staying where they are. And of that, 63,000, 14% are 55 and older.
Okay, Blue Springs has a reputation, and it goes back to the 80s and 90s, that we overbuilt in multifamily. And I tasked Mr. Cole with this. Councilman Culpepper, I'm not sure if it was just you and me from this current council or if there were others involved in the comprehensive plan in 2014, was it just you and I?
I think so.
Yeah. And we talked about moving forward, the different needs for a variety of housing in Blue Springs that we don't currently have. And I get that when you do these public meetings, everybody wants single-family homes. But what came out of the comprehensive plan was our goal to increase multifamily from where it was to 30%, 30% multifamily, 70% single-family. And I believe, Mr. Cole, I'm forgetting the exact term, but I think it's somewhere between 27% and 28% multifamily?
Correct.
Okay, so we still have room to grow in that area. And what I see here, I mean, we can talk whether it's a duplex or a single-attached, whatever you want to call it. There is a need for this with the aging demographic in the town. And just by way of full disclosure, my parents live in something similar to this in Indiana. And the reason they bought it is because of the maintenance that's provided. So there probably is a need for this type of housing. That's just kind of where I am on it right now.
In the 80s, whenever housing was so expensive, interest rates were 10%, points were 10%, and a lot of your younger Realtors haven't a clue what points are. But interest rates were 10%, points were 10%, and at that point in time, it was so expensive to buy a home. Over there by the hospital, I believe it's on Second Street, there is a row, just one row of really, really nice duplexes. And they are actually, at that point in time, they didn't have another term for them. But they were built with two families. I sold, I've sold several over there. And they are really nice on the inside and they're really big, there's a lot of brick ones over there. Really, really nice, only one row. And they were all built in the 80s and they were built when interest rates were so high, everything was so high, couldn't hardly get a loan. And we had that whole row go in there and every single seller, one of those at that time was occupied by a family, parents, grandparents, they were occupied by families. And I would say maybe there's 12, but you drive over there, they really look nice. And you never see them for sale. I saw, I had one over there that I put on the market, sold it in one day. And we didn't have numerous offers though because it was when interest rates were really high. But those were built in the 80s, all well taken care of. If the people still live there, I don't have any idea, but I'm sure they're badly in need of updating. But the upscale, I'm sorry, upscale, single-family homes attached are really in need. They really are. And like I say, I was really shocked when Justin told me we had an issue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Your Honor, may I?
Yes.
Ask a question? And Justin, do you mind? I'm kind of directed at this, I hate to make you get back up, but y'all have talked about upscale housing. And I've seen some of these type of plans that were upscale. As a matter of fact, I have some cousins that live in similar type things. My concern with this project is that you've got a lot of green space, I admit, a lot of percentage-wise. But most of that is in the back and surrounding areas. But from the fronts of these houses, we've come back and gone with, you know, less restriction as far as, you know, space in between houses and space from the road back. Councilman Kayler was concerned about parking from the street to the front of the house. And I know there's 24 units, 48 individual houses, however you wanted to find it. Could this project float financially if you cut back on the number of houses and increase some of that space between houses and some of those setbacks that we're asking to have changed?
Really, it'd be tough because what we wanted to do was give something, again, that was just very high quality. Something that you didn't see, stone, wood, stucco. You know, I come from the Pacific Northwest. And this is just something that I envisioned my home looking like. And it's just a look that I have really liked. And really going around, I don't see it that much, especially with this type of home. So again, looking at the price points on our materials and everything we want to do to get that $300,000 price point, this is about the best plan that we could come up with.
Well, looking, and if I did the math right in my head, at 300,000, you're looking at over $14 million that would come out of this project, which seems like a lot of money to go towards all that as far as what you need for infrastructure and how you build it out. I just, my curiosity is, was there a level that could, maybe 20 units where we could spread it out a little bit so it doesn't look so compact from the street? And that's what I'm viewing is if you drove through there, it's going to be very compact in there. Even though you're doing setbacks, you're still going to have a very compact view because most of the open space is behind the residence.
My part of it was, again, I did the building material costs, the cost per square foot. So again, that question I would probably defer to Jeremy. Because again, I went in and I priced out what it took to build per square foot, what the infrastructure was going to cost me per unit per square foot, which again, is why we needed the most units we could actually get to make sure that again, building a unit that costs you $160 a square foot just in building material and you could sell it for $200 a square foot, that's not counting infrastructure costs. So again, it was all built in. All the math was done on my part and then again, Jeremy engineered the rest.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you coming back up.
Okay.
While the developers up there, I do have maybe a question real quick. I guess in my tenure and other people's tenure as well, we've seen where single-family zoning gets changed to multifamily with great expectations and intentions by developers, et cetera. And then for whatever reasons, it does not get built. And then they come back and acknowledge, hey, they'd have to come back to plan and commission the city. But once it's zoned that way, then the game, the development actually starts and the negotiations really start and it just continues, the project goes down and down and down. And ultimately, you know, it doesn't, it has nowhere close to the original selling points that they gave this council. So if this doesn't work, would you be willing to let the zoning go back to single-family housing?
Again, the single-family, the dollar-wise with the NID payment, purchased property, the land, major road, the infrastructure costs, the price points just won't work. I mean, the amount of lots we would have to put in there would be a minimum size in Blue Springs and you'd never be able to build a house big enough to reap those profits back. It's just not feasible. And that's again, that's why we're, that's why we're so big on quality. Because I think this is about the only way we can make this work.
I think what I'm hearing though is tying a rezoning to development and if the development doesn't happen, the zoning doesn't happen. Is that, is that where you're headed?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what all that would take. But you know the problem, we've seen before.
Yes.
So.
Once you rezone it, then if you decide you don't want to do this anymore, we've got the zoning in place.
And we've seen developers that can't do it, end up selling the property to somebody else that, then, you know, and that's just how the whole thing gets started.
Well, and again, part of the plan with this is ridge goes hand in hand. A lot of the profit to make this float is also going to come from ridge. So again, they will go hand in hand. I'm going to be one of the first homes built over there, you can ask my wife. It's probably going to happen. So again, that was the thought process, is we looked at this as a combined thing.
Are you going to build them, are you going to build them simultaneously? I mean, is that what your plan is? If this all goes through, then you would be building both sides of the road at the same time?
Yeah, we're going to start on ridge, infrastructure-wise, and then we'll move across the street.
Did answer everybody's question, okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in support of? Support of, opposition too? Would you come up? Be sworn in?
Yes, sir. Chris Hendricks, 800 Southeast Willow Place, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014. I am actually the individual that said, that he told at our meeting that his plan is to do the 55-plus, however, his exact wording was, market will dictate if it doesn't work, that that restriction could go away. I guess he didn't say it would not, or it would automatically go away, but that was one thing that he said. You know, to a couple of points, to Ms. Groves, saying everybody in Eagles Ridge made money on their house, that is not true, and I can guarantee you that because I lost money on my house. I built 309 Southwest Webster Drive, which is the third house from the back on the southeast corner. I lost approximately $10,000 on my house. You know, we built that house before all of the townhomes and duplexes were in there. Granted to, you know, the city council or the zoning, it was zoned two-family, we knew it was eventually going to be built. You know, I didn't have a problem with it, you know, at that point, it, you know, it was, it fit. There was already some there, they looked, you know, decent. You know, we knew that going into it, it just so happened that by the time we finished our basement, put a deck, you know, did other upgrades to the house. The feedback that we got when we were selling our house, we ended up, I don't know the exact number of showings, but over half of them said lovely house, would buy it except for the duplexes. Now granted, it's a slightly different situation. My front door literally looked down, you know, the row of homes and there was always cars parked out there. You know, they didn't have enough parking spots. You know, and to the point, you know, that you asked, how many, you know, homes would it be as a single-family? I think during our meeting and during the planning and zoning, they said that it was, it would be eight less single-family homes. Now whether that's feasible or not, I have no idea personally, I just don't know. You know, I'm not in that business, I'm an accountant. You know, so there are trying to. You know, so they are trying to increase the amount of family units in that area. Speaking of the amount of family units in that area, you know, I had emailed all of you guys last week. And just this last week, the county has updated the, the parcel viewer map and I was pretty darn close whenever I came out with the, the number of homes. I was off by like 10. It looks like it's, for what is currently zoned and plotted, there was approximately 230-ish, 232, two-family residents, speaking by residents, I'm talking about front doors. There was less than 200, I think it was 198 or 199, single-family homes, once that area is developed and that, and so, you know, you're at a 50/50 ratio right now. You know, Mr. Carter, you had said that Blue Springs only wants to be at a 30% ratio. You know, we're well over that in that, you know, area between Adams Dairy, Seven Highway, Major Road, or I'm sorry, not Major Road, but would be if Willow Place would go straight across all the way down to Wyatt Road. You know, I just, you know, my other thing is, is, you know, you're, typically it seems in other developments, and I'm horrible with development names, the one that comes to mind is the, the nice estate lots that are off of Duncan Road. You know, they're surrounded by single-family homes. And then between that, then it goes to two-family homes, which I owned one of those. You know, when I first moved to Blue Springs nine years ago, I, you know, I owned a duplex and, you know, there's nothing wrong with them. It's just the buffer, you know, that, that it seems that we are typically have in Blue Springs. You know, you're, you're basically negating that. You know, the other thing is, is the major road eventually will, you know, connect to Eagles Ridge, so you're basically going to have a mile long straight of nothing but duplexes. And I just, you know, that to me brings down the value of the area, just because, you know, at some point in time, whether it be 20 years, 30 years from now, you know, if, if Ward goes belly up, which I don't know whether he will or not, but he owns all of those. You know, so if 200 and some odd, you know, amount of those hit the market all at once, you know, they're, they're not going to be selling for 300, $400,000. They're going to be selling for 30, $40,000, $50,000 just because of the sheer market supply and demand all hitting at once. You know, so my, you know, to Mr. Fowler's, you know, what he was bringing up, my concern is, is that we bring it into two-family homes or duplexes now. You know, he decides, well, you know, we get into it, it doesn't, it doesn't fees out for him. And so then we're left with two-family homes. Ward then decides to buy the 65-acre plot that's between the duplexes that he currently owns and rents and this, and then it just becomes solid duplexes all the way across. So, I mean, that's, that's my thoughts and concerns of being the property owner that is, you know, closest to it in Willow Tree. I'm on the corner of Adams Dairy and Willow Place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Want to come up? Be sworn in.
Good day. My name is Lynn Lee Collessy Moore. I live at 4301 Southeast Willow Place Court. I've lived there for 12-
Can you speak into that microphone? We can't hear you.
Sure. That's usually not said to me very often, so. I've lived in the subdivision for 12 years now. I do want to speak in support of the letters that were submitted by Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Johnson, Mr. and Mrs. Johnston, and Tommy Fevert. We, we, I strongly believe that this is not the location for this type of development. I do believe it is needed, but I don't believe this is the right location for it. We too have looked at, at smaller places. We've looked at the, the development by the trails. The trails took at least eight years to fully come developed over there. So the fact that he's talking about, you know, doing these right away, I have my doubts. Who knows how long this bull market's going to continue? I want to talk about a couple of other things, just besides the property value, even though he claims that, you know, our property's going to bring his up. So what, what does that tell you? I'm, I'm a little bit curious about this being a land bank transaction. The land bank documentation says that for multifamily and commercial land transfers, that they can be structured in a manage, in a manner that permits the land bank to enforce recorded covenants and conditions upon title pertaining to development and use of the property. Since this is a land bank, can you require that it be a 55-plus? And can you put any other type of restrictions on this?
I would defer to our city attorney.
That would be something the land bank could do. And we have a meeting coming up on August 30th and we'll, we can discuss it at that meeting.
Typically, what the land bank does, and I happen to be the chairman of the land bank, so, and the land bank is, has a board consisting of members of the community that are appointed by the mayor and the city council. And the representatives generally reflect people who are involved in real estate. There's also a school district representative. And when the land bank was formed, we actually did not have, we were, five years ago, it was formed. And the policies and procedures that you may see on the website or that you, that you downloaded, I'm assuming, may not necessarily reflect how the market and our situation has changed over time. And five years ago, we may not have envisioned that we would have had many of these properties from the Chapman Farms or the Colonial Highlands properties that were in the land bank. So typically, now that there's interest in the market and the land bank has been contacted by Summit Custom Homes, Mr. Larkin, and other individuals who are interested in developing the properties, we enter into a standard real estate contract. A price is negotiated and agreed to. That property hasn't closed because there is a due diligence period that the developer wants to go through. They don't want to buy property that they can't develop. And so our language typically in the contract is not to impose any restrictions like that, but it requires the developer to go through the, the planning process with the planning commission and the city council. So the land bank historically has not gotten into imposing any types of restrictions or covenants in those agreements, but rather deferring to the appropriate bodies, which is the planning commission and the city council to determine the ultimate restrictions. Does that help?
It does. So how do they then do it? How do the planning commission and the city ensure that the statements that are being made here are then complied with?
I'll defer.
We can, I mean, they're presenting a plan today, correct? And if it passes, then they have, they're required to, to comply with that plan?
Mike's standing over there.
Yeah, I'll let you.
Yes, I'll take a shot at answering that. The, the, the plan development concept plan is part of a plan development designation of the property, which is a specific type of zoning map amendment. And so when you ask for a PD designation for a property, a plan goes with that. A PD concept plan and a PD final plan. Therefore, the developer is required to build to that concept plan as part of that PD zoning designation. And so there are the conditions that it require, that it comply with all requirements of the Unified Development Code, that it comply with the Alternative Development Standards, things of that nature. The, the zoning code does not distinguish between a 55 or 65 and older project in terms of age restriction. I don't believe that legally and from a zoning standpoint, we can zone a property to only be for residents of a certain age or any other kind of distinguishing factor among the residents that could be considered to be discriminatory housing. So I don't believe that's in our zoning anywhere. I would defer to the city attorney on that.
It was my understanding that, from the planning commission presentation, that it was going to, the 55 and over housing was going to be included in the HOA covenants and restrictions. And that is legal. I mean, they can put those in the restrictions if they comply with the HUD rules for that. And I, like Mr. Johnson said, there is already a contract that hasn't been finally approved by the land bank, but will be for the land bank on the 30th. And the terms have already been negotiated.
Which, I can appreciate that they've already been negotiated. I was just curious about how this item six on here, that's in a number of these sections in here was actually utilized.
Oh, in the land bank policy?
Yeah, so you've, you've answered that question, that to date you have not utilized that.
There haven't been very many land bank properties that have sold since it hasn't been in existence very long.
Right, right. So, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because I looked at the entire time that properties at the Corlal and Moreland School in Adams Dairy Parkway sat, I don't know, with construction and development stopped. I don't know how many years that was. I'm sure it was more than one hand. I am curious about, this gentleman has not mentioned any HOAs, how many, what the level of HOAs would be on top of the, the purchase price of this development, considering all the open space and, and amenities that will be there. I'm concerned about that. I am concerned about the, the drainage and the information I saw on hi, on him. And after talking with the city, because I called and asked the city, the city states that, that, that the developers will ensure maximum infiltration of stormwater and to reduce the velocity of the stormwater. And from what I heard, they just want to let it sit at the peak that it is right now. And the peak that is right now is an incredible rate of speed. When they tore those trees down and regraded those two pieces of property, the amount of water that goes into that unnamed tributary is significant, as you heard from some of the letters in, in the, in the emails. So there again, I'm taking my time. These are the areas that I'm concerned with. I'm concerned with the value of the property that they will actually do, that they said that they would do, like a lot of other developments. One other item I want to mention, the traffic right now on Adams Dairy Parkway, we hear them race along there all the time. And then where, where the entrance to the Willow Tree subdivision is, you cannot see over the top of that hill when you're sitting there. There's going to be a significant racket, that intersection, when somebody comes over that hill. They, I appreciate that they're going to do a traffic study, that they'll get a reputable firm, but to have another entrance right there on Adams Dairy where you can't really see what's going on, I think is going to be a hazard as well. So that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for answering my questions.
All right, thank you.
Both of you, I appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Does anyone?
Yeah, a few comments for the record. I did see him hold his hand up as well.
Oh.
Just to address a few comments.
You're not, you're speaking in opposition, you hear clarification, right?
No.
Right.
Can I?
Yeah.
Continue, okay. Regarding the spaces between the, the units, the current duplex lot requirements, eight foot between lot lines, we're proposing 20 feet between the two units. So we're exceeding the minimum setback, side setback that would be required if there was a property line running between them. Regarding the increase, the Colonial Highlands that was approved in 2017, it had 40 single families on the west side and 31, I'm sorry, 45 units or lots, I'm sorry, lots on the east side. Currently, we're, that's a total of 85. Both developments, there's 48 units on the west side, 31 on the east side for a net of 79. So we're actually reducing the number of units from the approved plan from 2007. The restrictions and covenants will be a requirement of the final plat. And I'd like to point out again, the stormwater runs through Willow Tree is uncontrolled at this time. So any improvements that we do should help litigate the problems that happens, at least some of them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Ryan, did you have?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments, I guess, for the record, or wanted to put them on the record. Appreciate everything that's been said and the opportunity from the applicant to, to invest in our community. I guess relative to this vicinity, I want to talk just a moment to that. Your Honor, I think when you were on the Board of Alvin in the 1980s, I, staff looked that up and that's when the first plat was for Willow Tree. It came to my attention somewhere in the early 90s, getting involved and, and going out to that location. And boy, you really had to work at it to get there in the early 90s because the roads were not down there. Adams Dairy wasn't even, you know, even close to being funded yet. And it's a, it's a large lot subdivision, residential estate. You're correct when you say it doesn't have curbs and everything because it's, it is truly a large lot developed back during that timeframe. Since the early 1990s, I have seen Willow Tree subdivision grow. And every time we talk about land use in that vicinity, they're always there saying, hey, we, we moved clear out here. And, and it was back in the sticks back then for a large lot subdivision. And they have continually asked for single-family housing surrounding in that vicinity. I don't think it's any accident that it's single-family now. At one time, there was a developer thinking it could be developed to single-family. They agreed to the zoning at that time. So I understand a lot of, you know, there's been good economic times and bad economic I know, you know, I guess I'm concerned about all the things that have gone into this over the years, property values being the leading one as well. So I just want to say that they've been working this for a very long, very long time.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a couple of, of concerns. I echo what Councilman Fowler said, but I also want to say, as I'm looking, I have in front of me, and I don't know whose little chart this is, but green and orange.
That was mine.
Okay.
That was what I had sent to you. That's what from the, it's very deceiving what they sent out as what the current zoning is because they basically chop off all the two-family homes and just leave a little sliver to the left.
Okay, well-
So I zoomed out to, to look at what it's-
As I look at this-
Y'all are going to have the conversation with each other at the microphone.
Yeah. As I, as I look at this particular layout, while I think this looks like a very nice development, it sounds like it's quality. We can talk about definition, it really doesn't matter. But when I look at this, I'm looking at something that has two families zoning sandwiched in with all single-family around it and right on Adams Dairy.
That's in our packet. Could we get that slide up so we can all see what she's referring to? Because I, I think it's worth a look as well.
And that gives me some concern. Sticking it right in the middle of single-family. Yeah, you've got it.
And what page that is by chance?
Can you tell what page it is? I've enlarged it so much that I'm-
184?
Yeah.
And I used the Jackson County Interactive Parcel Viewer to be able to create that and basically just took a screenshot off of Google Maps.
Well, and as we're talking, this large piece of, what's it look like? I don't know. Texas? I don't know. But the property up against Adams Dairy to the left is where we're talking about putting duplexes or two, single two-family homes. I think that's-
I think it's the-
And right along there. Whereas all surrounding it, that immediate area is single-family and then estate homes. So I'm not sure that that's the best place to be putting this single-family attached house. I have some very, very big concerns about that. I understand that the property is owned by the land bank. I understand that we are not receiving taxes on the property. But saying that, I also believe that whether, that that should not be a determining factor when I look at what I feel would be in the best interest of the community out there.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, if I could?
Yes.
I'm assuming this is appropriate time for comments, since we're all doing it. Everybody's done talking or whatever.
So when we actually get to the bill itself, we've already talked out.
We've already talked it out, okay. Well, I have, I have a question for staff and, and it kind of relates to Councilman Carter's and a little bit of Councilman Culpepper's. a little bit of Councilman Culpepper's comments. When Chapman Farms and this whole area originally started to develop way back when, we came up with single-family, two-family, commercial. We had a certain amount of percentage that was going to be multifamily, certain amount of percentage, single-family, certain amount of percentage was going to be estate homes. And we've approved some changes to some of our zoning, and it seems like staff has made the comment that the area would absorb, we had a certain percentage, and this kind of goes back to what Councilman Carter was saying, about 30% on the concept plan, but there was a certain percentage of multifamily that we had allotted for this vast area development. And it seems like we keep changing some of it that was single-family to multifamily, two-family homes, however you want to define it. And I don't know if we've ever looked at, or has it been said, the amount of two-family that we have, are we reaching that maximum percentage that we originally had planned for this development area? Or have we exceeded it? Or, you know, what's left out there? Because it seems to me sooner or later, we're going to end up with, you're only going to be able to build residential unless you alter. We're going to be altering all the zoning on all this to try to get new family, new housing in, because everybody wants to go kind of like the lowest common denominator to be able to build. So, do you know where we stand on two-family? That's a roundabout way of asking it, and I probably didn't do it very well, but hopefully you understood. Where do we stand in this whole area as far as two-family considered, compared to what we originally wanted to put out in this development area?
So, let me make sure I understand. You're specifically asking about the percentage or the breakdown of multifamily versus single-family, not citywide, but within a defined.
Within the defined area, which.
I would have to defer and ask one of the other staff members that may have been here a little bit.
That's fine.
Or.
That's good. Let's go to City Minister.
Okay.
I'll try, Councilman.
Go for it.
So, rewind the tape. Chapman Farms' plan, the concept that it was, was at least 2004, 2005, and the bonds were issued in 2009. And we all know what happened in 2009.
Right.
So, we are still, at this point, I believe, still climbing our way out of the hole that we were, found ourselves in. This particular property was actually not part of the Chapman Farms' master plan.
Okay.
It was, I believe it was called the Platts' property, and it was part of Jim Tharp and Lyle Irwin, part of Colonial Nursery at the time. And so, they had a standalone development for this area that ultimately, I believe, was taken over by the bank. And they are, they're no longer in it, and then it ultimately has found its way to the Chapman Farm, to the land bank. So, we'd have to, we won't be able to produce that information for you tonight. We would have to spend some additional time and research this, but the property is part of the NID. And Ms. Kate's, approximately $19 million in bonds were issued, and we are approximately nine years into the debt. So, we have another 11 years to go because it was 20-year sewer bonds that were issued. The NID was originally sized, and Mr. Sandy may need to weigh in on this, there were assumptions that were made in 2004 and 2005 based upon what the master developer thought they envisioned would occur with regard to the development. There were large lot estates, there was commercial along Seven Highway, and every time the plan changes slightly, for example, if there is more density that's going to be proposed, that density is going to absorb and use up.
Correct.
Some of the capacity that has been granted for the rest of the NID. Mr. Sandy, am I, you want to weigh in on that issue? Because that affects the ultimate plan. And the point I'm going to make there is that we would not be able, long-term, to sustain multiple, multifamily scenarios, because the capacity to support the sewer, I don't believe would be there. All right, so Mr. Sandy?
He's going to the microphone.
Fix what I just said, okay?
Kind of like stepping out behind a curtain there, aren't you?
Technical difficulties. You are correct. The entire NID was put together with a specific set of criteria and capacity for each of the developments. Some of them broke it down into exactly how many single-family, multifamily, commercial projects would be involved. Some of them were based just on acreage. As we've gone through, it cannot be absorbed throughout the entire development because there are sub-basins throughout the southern area. That's why we have lift stations that collect that. And so, we have to watch and be very careful and mindful of what we do in each one of the sub-basins. Looking at this project, with the numbers they have and the number of units calculated on the number of people that are associated with duplexes versus single-family homes and the water usage, their plan works and is somewhat equivalent to what you would have with single-family homes. Is that answered?
But we'll have to go back and do that research if you want some more clarification based upon what the original Chapman Farms' plan.
It just seems like we're putting, and maybe this is the best way to go to have back and look at it, it just seems like we're adding more density to this area that's being developed now, which means you're going to have to have less density on the areas that aren't being developed at some point, or you're going to run out of basic capacity, or we're going to have to spend more money for it.
When we look at the sewer capacity, we're very careful because the Platts' property that is just to the west of this.
Correct.
Has a capacity allotment for it. You don't get to take some of that to make this one work. You have to work with the capacity that's allotted for that acreage to make it happen. On the developments where they actually laid out the lots, we'll get down to the point where we count all the different lots and make sure that everything comes together as it should. I can't, I can't pull some from this side to this side because it's not fair.
Right.
It all goes basically with a capacity per acre, if you will, and you can't exceed it. Now, some of those, when they did the calculations on a straight per acre basis, left them some latitude as to what they would do with the property, whether it would be single-family, multifamily, commercial. So, it was a little bit, it gave more freedom with the ones that were calculated by acre as opposed to those who actually said, we're going to build 301 single-family homes, we're going to build 211 paired homes, and then we're going to have 43,000 feet of commercial. Because that really narrowed it down and did not necessarily equate to the same amount of capacity they would have had if they had done it by an acre. But the reason they did that was the ones that were very finite and their determination wound up spending less money than those that did the broad calculation.
Okay, so you allowed some fudge factor in there, but what you're saying basically is that these 48 family homes, if I'm going connected, but they're still 48 family homes, aren't going to generate more capacity than single-family residents built on individual lots?
They will not exceed the capacity that was allotted for the acreage that they're going on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, since we're on the topic, I know we're going to talk out on this, but I think some of what Councilman Anderson, we've had this conversation before, is speaking to, is the criteria by which staff evaluates these projects. Because our understanding is, there was a percentage of multifamily allowed for this whole area, let's say it was 30%, and then each individual project had an allotment of multifamily. So, it was 10% for Colonial Highlands and 20% for Eagles Ridge. Well, then Colonial Highlands comes in and says, actually, we want 20% multifamily, not 10. And staff says, well, that's under the 30% threshold. But that 30% threshold was for the whole area, not for each project. And so, if we increase the threshold for each project up by five or 10% each time, then our grand total for the whole area is going to end up being well over 30%. And granted, there's new staff involved than there was when we were talking about this, so maybe you guys are on top of it. But that's the concern when we see a project in this area, that each incremental increase for each individual project is going to have a grand total well over what was intended for that whole area. And so, that's where you get these questions from.
Point of clarification, your honor, I think 30% citywide.
Right, right. No, I was using as a hypothetical. I don't remember, there was a number, and I don't remember what it was, but that was an example, if it was 23% for the whole area. That's why you get this pushback on these type of projects, is we're concerned that the incremental increase will have a grand total that will be difficult to maintain.
Well, and I think when we were talking about Chapman Farms way back when, and we said that we had to be very careful because they were applying the C-wide percentage to that smaller area. And we ended up with way more than what we really intended in the initial drawing out of that plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, clear as mud. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Can we still talk? Are we still in opposition?
Yeah, we were just about talked out, folks.
There's only one point on that.
Well, you can come up and be sworn in.
Okay. Then I'll have short time.
Pardon?
I have short time.
Yeah, as long as you don't repeat the same things, I've already been made. Do you go hear me hit the gavel?
I do. Yeah, it's Chris Hicks, I'm at 1002 Southeast Willow Ridge Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri. I really just want to make a couple of comments. One, he has, that little map is great. I love this, because you can see where, he's planning on doing it is over on the right, and there are two-family homes over on the left-hand side of that thing. The area right in between is not developed by anybody right now, it's owned, single-family. My biggest fear is that you're going to have two-family homes on one side, two-family homes on the other side. Somebody is going to come in immediately and say, I want to build two-family homes here because it's not viable for me to build single-family homes in between the two. And then, as you guys are saying, we're going to end up having multifamily homes all throughout that entire area.
That could end up being green space.
What's that?
That could end up being green space.
And I understand that, and I don't know what the city has paid for that land. I understand you want to get rid of it, and.
We don't buy.
We didn't pay anything.
We didn't pay anything.
Okay, if you didn't pay anything for it, then I'm just trying to figure out why. Is anybody come, and, I mean, do you guys own the middle area too? Or is that owned by somebody else at this point?
It is, I believe.
Well, let me clarify that. Say we didn't pay anything. When we accept it from the land bank.
Right.
We, the city is making those NID payments.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's not necessarily, we didn't cost us anything. Yeah, we're retiring those bonds.
Right.
With city funds.
I understand.
So, when we sell it, we're no longer paying those funds to retire the NID bonds.
Got you.
We will put that property on a tax roll.
I understand, and that's what we want, is more property on the tax rolls.
Essentially, didn't we, we got back tax money and exchanged, or we got the land and exchanged for back tax money.
Right.
So, it did cost us, so to speak, and the citizens, so to speak.
Yes.
I understand that. And then, my other fear is, I mean, and these are just concerns, you know, I don't know if they're, you know, even possible or not, but I would be more interested to make sure that he develops land on the east side of this and his own land before he actually puts together this subdivision of the multifamily homes. Because I, like you guys and everybody else, I've seen several of these additions in this area come in, and they start one way, and then they just slowly get smaller and smaller and smaller, or have less valuable homes put on those lands. So, I would like to see that other side developed at the same time or before the multifamily homes, if he decides.
As a matter of fact, I think I heard him say that he was going to start building his side.
I understand what he says, but that isn't always what happens. That's my fear.
And if I'm not mistaken, I also heard the value of a million dollars.
Yes, I understand, and.
What is that going to do to your property and everybody else's?
I know, all of our property are, there's many million-dollar homes sitting in Willow Tree right now where I live, so I understand completely. And then, the other thing that I wanted to point out is the fact that Blue Springs has a large number of multifamily homes already, as we were saying, 28% or more. And then, also, all of the single-family homes, or a lot of the single-family homes are start homes, that are lower-valued homes that families come in here, and I've seen many of them, they come in as young families and they want to start a home, and they come into Blue Springs. And I have many of my friends who have moved to Lee Summit once they become a little more affluent, and they're looking for a larger home, because they feel like it's some better residences out there that they can get than what they have in Blue Springs. I think, my personal opinion is, we have limited amount of land in Blue Springs, and it'd be nice to have a little larger house than the typical in Blue Springs, so that these young families that are coming up and becoming more affluent have somewhere else in Blue Springs to buy, rather than having to move out of our city into one of the other communities around Kansas City area.
I think your point's well-taken. You, we lose people on two fronts.
Right.
We lose them to Lee Summit, and I hate to keep saying it, losing.
I do too, because I've lived in Blue Springs my entire life.
But the other thing that we end up losing families on is when you become my age and you want a maintenance free.
I agree.
And you want something nice.
I agree.
And so, I think, you know, as I look at this, what's being proposed, I think that kind of.
It is a nice residence, but I can tell you that there are single-family homes that they're building just south of that, in that area. And you can look at Willow Tree and everything else, and it's hard for me, I'm kind of like Susan, to believe that we're going to get $300,000 out of a 1,500-square-foot duplex. And I, sorry, I agree, it's a duplex if they're together. I don't see any distinction between a, you know, house that's connected to another one and a duplex. Anyway, but I don't see how you're going to get $300,000 for any residents when houses are for sale in Willow Tree on acre lots that are much, much larger, and people are getting $400,000 or so for them. So, I don't understand how the ones south that are single-family homes are going for less, and the ones that are on large estate lots are going for just slightly more, and for some reason, people are going to go in and buy a duplex for $300,000. So, those are my concerns, and I'll take them for, you know, I trust your guys' judgment, so I'll let you guys decide whatever you think. But I wanted to let you know.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, you want to come up and be sworn in? And please do not repeat the points I've already been made.
I'll try not to, as best as if I can.
I'll remind you if you do.
Curtis Johnson.
I do. Curtis Johnson, I live at 4306 Southeast Willow Place Court, Blue Springs, Missouri. Smack dab in the middle of Willow Tree. A 30-year Blue Springs resident, I moved over from the parks. Some of you were my neighbors. When I built in Willow Tree, it was a country, trees everywhere. The main thing I want to talk about.
Can you move back a little bit?
No, I'm too loud, sorry. The main thing I want to discuss is home values. My property, smack dab in the middle of Willow Tree, was appraised about five years ago for $405,000. The homes in Willow Tree are ranging, they're being sold between 375 and 450. The homes range anywhere from 4,000, well, up to 5,000 square feet. To get $300,000 for 1,500 square feet, even if it's a brand-new facility, a brand-new house, I think it's a pipe dream. I really don't think it's going to be possible. Not, there's many other things, all the tree areas that are going to come down. I'm suspicious that what they say is going to happen, it really happens, and I think you really ought to consider all that. Adams Dairy, once was a, I mean, just a beautiful area, and now, if you go to the south, there are many multi-homes, two-family homes, duplexes, everything's turning into rental areas out there. I'd like to see more single-family homes, is what I would like to see. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
You bet.
Hopefully, you guys will agree.
Okay, anyone else? Closing this public here. Okay, we're going to go to item number five. And now, am I right here? I'm losing.
Yeah.
No, no, I need to go to number seven.
Seven.
Introduction ring will be a 4588.
I'll introduce it.
All right.
First reading of bill number 4588, in ordinance rezoning property from SF7 PRO, single-family planned residential overlay to TFPD, two-family planned development.
Move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, your honor, I opened, I introduced that, or made the motion to approve because I want to make sure we, give it an opportunity. I don't know that I can support this. I do go back to, you know, looking at that whole area, I believe that if you go from Eagles Ridge south to Wyatt, over to the east to Adams Dairy, and then up, all that area, I think it's got probably, in the proportion of units, probably is going to be higher than 30%. So, it's going to help the city make our goal already without adding any more two-family to it. Putting two-family right in the middle of all that green, you know, doesn't really work for me, considering the history I've known about that property and that vicinity. considering the history I've known about that property and that vicinity. They've been, again, it's no accident, it's a single-family. Relative to the city ownership or the land bank, if you get land for $0 and you sell it for several hundred thousand, we're gonna be able to pay back some of that money for the NID. You know, we're in a, we're making money on this deal when you get it for $0. So, and I acknowledge that we have to go and take, and pay the NID in the meantime.
We're not making money.
Okay.
Okay. Christine will back me up. We're not making money. We're subsidizing it.
Subsidizing the NID.
Subsidizing the NID and. Just the property by itself. So the sale that we would get on this property, or any other property that's in the land bank, that's in the NID, that money, first of all, in order for it to get to the land bank, it was three years delinquent on taxes. So this proposed sale does not require the potential buyer to make good on those three years that's gone. So that money's gone. So we're looking forward, so we're still gonna come up short. Okay. I think we'll be all right. That's my point.
Councilman Levison?
I actually just want to make a comment to Mr. Larkin, since you're in the room here. I recognize this, the first project, and obviously, I don't know how my colleagues are gonna vote. I personally am not gonna support it tonight. But regardless of what happens, if you're successful, then congratulations. We want you to continue to keep building in Blue Springs. If you're unsuccessful, don't take this personally, or we want you to continue to build in the city. And we want you to continue to do projects in Blue Springs. And you will have our support when it warrants what, when we agree is best fit for the property. So don't be discouraged if it doesn't go your way tonight. If it does, then congratulations. But I just wanted to put that out to you personally. We want you to be building in Blue Springs, and we appreciate you living here and being a resident, and continuing to do business here, regardless of what happens tonight.
Susan and Dan, Councilman Carter?
Yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said earlier. I don't, I'm not considering the NID issue as part of how I feel about this. Because I don't think that that's what this decision should be based on. I think my decision will be based on the fact that this is locating two-family home in the middle of a single-family area, and right up against our Adams Dairy Parkway, which to me is one of the nicest roads we have coming into our city. So at this point, I, as much as I think this is a lovely project, I don't think this is the right location for it, so I will not be supporting it.
Councilman Carter?
With all of that said, I mean, this product is something that I think this city needs moving forward, especially as our population ages through the baby boom. This may not be the right project, may not be the right location, but this is the right product. So maybe if not here, maybe somewhere else.
Yeah, I would say that.
Well, I will add my two cents. If I'm not mistaken, I think I heard the developer say that this project, the acres, goes along with the ridge. One is probably contingent on the other one. So if you did, if you vote this one down, you're probably not gonna get the ridge that's going to be estate-sized lots and homes. And again, I think that if we can bring this into the city and someone else pick up the NID, which is costing us money. Again, it's a very nice product, which I think, I agree with Councilman Carter, that I think is needed in Blue Springs, so we don't continue to lose people to Lee Summit. That this is a good project. So I'll be supporting it.
Your Honor, could we expand on that point, relative to the ridge? And I agree with, everything's been set up here when Chris says, "Hey, continue to build in Blue Springs." The next item on the agenda.
Is the ridge.
Is the same developer wanting to pursue that. The Planning Commission did go ahead and hear that, and they approved that. So are, when you say that they're linked, are we gonna continue to hear that project if this fails?
No, we're gonna continue to hear it.
Oh, okay, so we will be casting a vote on that as well?
Oh, yeah. But what I'm saying, if the developer is, will he, although if we deny this and approve the other one, is he willing to do the ridge without the acres? You know, that's the question at hand. Okay.
May I?
Yes, you might as well.
Since you broached that subject, and I guess, you know, I agree that this is a product. I've seen this product in other areas. My only concern with this is the density of this project. But if the density has to be there to be able to float the project across the street, then that poses a real quandary there, that, okay, we shoot this down to something that maybe is not good for the area, but it's a good product, if it can be rehabbed and maybe do less density. But if they have to have that density to be able to afford to do the project across the street, then we may end up losing both projects on this. And I think that's what you were referring to.
That's exactly the point I was making.
But I still like not to think that we're, you know, being held at, not at gunpoint, but I mean, being held at, you know, you're not only gonna get this if you do this. To me, you know, that's kind of like blackmail, and I'm not comfortable with that, so.
Well, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't say he's blackmailing us. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, just a point of information here, and maybe the developer and the applicant can respond to this. But the current contract to purchase real estate property with the land bank includes both of those parcels. So there are not two separate, there are not two separate agreements. There is one price for both pieces of property. And I can't speak for Mr. Larkin tonight, and maybe he can respond to this later. But I would think potentially denial of one would put that entire contract at risk.
Mr. Larkin, would you like to come in?
That's.
He pretty much said it. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna roll call this first vote.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Culpepper?
No.
Councilman Kaler?
No.
Councilman Levison?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion failed with the vote of five to two.
Okay, so that fails, so we'll have introduction ring and bill number 4589.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
And I guess it really doesn't make any difference. If you're not gonna rezonate, you don't need a plan.
First reading of bill number 4589, an ordinance approving Hootaw Acres Plan Development Concept Plan.
Move the bill be denied on its first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Carter? This is for a denial.
This is for denial. So a yes vote is for denial.
Well, again, what's the point?
Well, I know, we're just gonna go through the formality.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson? Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
No.
Motion to deny carry is six to one.
Okay, we have. You will get through this here eventually. Item number 10, we're gonna combine the public hearing for the rezone Hootaw Ridge and the Plan Development Concept Plan for Hootaw Ridge.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record for the zoning and plan development concept plan for Hootaw Ridge. For the rezoning, we have Plan Commission, Planning Commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, applications with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, PowerPoint presentation from Powell CWM Inc., email from resident Kevin Johnston, email from resident Curtis Johnson, amended Planning Commission report dated August 17, 2018, and bill approving the rezoning, as well as exhibit number two, which is the amended PowerPoint presentation from Powell CWM Inc. For the Plan Development Concept Plan, we have the following exhibits. We have Planning Commission staff report with attachments, 185, or I'm sorry, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, PowerPoint presentation from Powell CWM Inc., email from resident Kevin Johnston, email from resident Curtis Johnson, amended Planning Commission's report dated August 17, 2018, and bill approving Plan Development Concept Plan. Exhibit number two presented this evening is the amended PowerPoint presentation from Powell CWM Inc. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mr. Mallon?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, it's my understanding that based upon the previous action just taken by the City Council in denying the Hootaw Acres project, that the developer wishes to withdraw his request for the Hootaw Ridge project and no longer requests a rezoning of that property. He can speak to that withdrawal request a little bit more.
Did you want to speak to that? Nope, there's no need. So that request has been withdrawn. So we will move on to item number 14, a public hearing to rezone McCoy Triangle.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report, site location map, site aerial map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 28, 2018, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and application submittal, petition in opposition, and bill approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Nathan?
Thank you, Mayor Ross, and councilors. This public hearing being held at the request of the applicant Sean Caton, representing the owner, William McCoy, for consideration to rezone the property from GB, General Business, to MF14, Moderate Density, Multifamily, for the 1.06-acre McCoy Triangle development, which is located at 100 Southeast AA Highway, and bounded by two highways on the north, 40 Highway and AA Highway, and Speace Drive to the east, and Southwest Jaguar Lane to the south. Currently, this property is undeveloped. And the site is proposed to be platted and developed as a one-lot subdivision for two multifamily buildings with up to 14 dwelling units. This proposal for multifamily use is allowed with the requested MF14 zoning district. I will mention that additional applications will be required before development can occur. Mainly, the preliminary final plat, which the preliminary plat was heard by Planning Commission earlier on August 13th. Also, a site plan design review to solidify the site and building design on the property. And if there are places where this development does not work, the applicant always has the opportunity to request a plan development on this property as well. On August 13th, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. Citizens voiced concerns mainly over traffic, crime, property maintenance, and property values. I will mention that there were also some complaints about some residents not receiving a notification letter. And we'll say the staff did send notification letters to all 16 of these properties shown on this map, and also to these 16 addresses shown on the table here that were pulled from Jackson County records. Staff did only receive one letter back as a non-deliverable address. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning for the following four reasons. First, due to the location of AA Highway, this property is more connected to the residential to the south than the commercial to the north. For a little backstory on this, 40 Highway did run east to west where Jaguar Lane is currently and connected with 40 Highway, a little bit to the west of this site. Back in 1986, the properties to the north of where AA Highway used to run were all rezoned to commercial, general business, to be specific. And also, all of the properties to the south in this location of AA Highway were residential, existing at that point. However, around 1993, AA Highway was rerouted to its current location where it is now, and essentially splitting this property away from the other commercial to the north. Connecting it more, in a sense, to the residential to the south compared to where the commercial was and currently is to the north. So staff does recommend, based on that assumption, first. Secondly, the existing trees along 40 Highway and the grade change does create a natural buffer that both limits noise and visibility from the highway. This existing buffer reduces the property's marketability as a visible commercial property. And it also increases the property's desirability by the reduction in noise as a residential development. Third, the property can serve as a transitional zone between the two zoning districts and the highways to the north. So to the north, there is the highways, 40 and AA Highway, and general business. And if this is rezoned to multifamily, it would provide a more gradual transition between the single-family and two-family to the south, and the highways and commercial to the north. Lastly, the proposed zoning is appropriate given the Comprehensive Plan's future land use policy map designation of the property as a neighborhood area. Planning Commission did recommend approval with a vote of six to five. And staff, again, does recommend approval. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Nathan?
Yes, Your Honor. Back to the other slide, real quick. This one? Yeah. Increase the size of that there. You mentioned a number of times to the north, and I think you're talking about Hy-Vee, basically, over there. But this is a, I guess by the name of it, and you can kind of see it there, it's more of a triangle. So there's three sides to it. What about to the east? Isn't that general business as well?
To the east where Speace Drive is?
That's a gas station.
Yeah, the gas station.
Oh, the gas station, yeah, that's, that's commercial.
So to me, it looks like two out of the three sides are already general business. And with one side, on the south side, being residential. Am I clear in saying that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so two out of the three sides are general business. And it's already, it's already its own general business.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Levison?
You answered one of my questions with regards, staff made some comment in the explanation about this being a transitional property, and I think your explanation, that was helpful, so thank you for that. So the question that it leaves me with is just the property itself. Obviously, if the footprint of a duplex, of a two-family home, is gonna be about the same, I'm wondering if something like a Scooters or something like that, what could be located on this property the way it's currently set up? What kind of footprint could fit there? Are we talking like a Taco Bell, or is like a Scooters as big as you get? Or what kind of ranges are we looking at if it stays general business? Sorry, I know that's a curveball question, but I'm trying to envision the property other than being just grass.
It's about an acre in size, which is about 40,000 square feet for the lot itself.
Right, so with parking, with our current codes.
And typically, you wouldn't see too many more, a larger building than half the property.
Okay.
That's, that's a pretty large.
It's about 20,000 square feet, give or take.
That'd be a large building on an acre.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Just a question, if, in your background information, it indicates that it be developed as a single lot with two multifamily buildings with up to 14 dwelling units, what would be the parking requirement for up to 14 dwelling units?
It is one per unit.
Per unit?
Yeah, and I will mention the preliminary plat, which is in part of this, did show a proposed outline, and it did show, I believe, was it six on one side and eight on the other as two buildings? And there's driveways off of Jaguar Lane, not off of AA or 40 Highway.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, I will mention, as proposed in the preliminary plat and shown, the general layout of the driveways does take up more lot frontage than allowed. The driveways can only take up 25% of lot width. And they, as my rough calculation, they're taking around 30 or 35% of that lot width. So they'd have to determine how to rearrange the driveways, maybe have some back garages or something to reduce the amount of driveways along Jaguar Lane.
So, in my interpretation, driveway is entry/exit? Or are you talking driveway with parking on it?
A driveway with parking typically like your traditional, like duplexes or single-family.
Okay.
Yep, one more time, back to the other drawing again. So, looking at the, I guess, looking at the intersection there, that is a light intersection at 40 and AA. Three of the four corners already are general business, and I guess from a public safety perspective, I think about, if that's all of a sudden residential, where are the kids playing at? Looks like they're playing on a busy corner. So, is there going to be buffering that protects the residents from getting out in that vicinity, or, I see trees now, but-
I'd have to, that would be part of the site plan design review process, and so I don't know the answer to that. The applicant might be able to answer that a little bit better, but there is the buffering and the steep grade change along 40 Highway that along AA, there isn't as much.
If that might also add to the multifamily numbers getting to 30%?
Good.
All right, oh, we'll move on. Thank you, Nathan, unless there's some questions of him. Okay, the developer or representative like to come, be sworn in and make comments.
Sean Caton, 6320 Marion Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, 64133. I'm here representing the current landowner on the property. I do have, if they put it on the overhead, an actual rough layout of a site plan. I actually, to be totally honest, I didn't think that this little rezoning thing was going to require a lot of explanation based on this, based on this piece of property and where it was located. But if you got any questions, I'm here prepared to answer.
Okay, you all see the drawings up there? Do you have any questions? Nope, yes, I don't have any questions. Your drawing did it for them. Okay, anyone who wants to like to speak in support of? Yes, come up and be sworn in.
Brad Lungstrom, 909 Southwest Speace Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri.
Can you repeat your name again, I'm sorry?
Brad Lungstrom.
Brad Lungstrom, thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you. Well, as you guys see, they're wanting to do the 14 family dwelling, or, yeah, the MF14. As you said earlier, in the last case, that is 30%. You've already added more down on AA. You're putting this in, wanting to do this in this intersection that I know myself, I've been-
Now, are you in support of or opposition to?
I do not want it.
Neither way?
Huh?
You're here to speak in support of or opposition to?
Opposition, I do not want it.
Okay, because I hadn't called opposition.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry.
But nobody spoke up on support of, so I'm on opposition.
I'm sorry. So, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
As you see, these wanted to do a 14 dwelling. I know myself, I've already been on accident twice, that was not my fault, just in the stoplight with my children, but it's a busy, busy intersection, as you all must know. One, the safety of the neighborhood, of traffic. I know last week, there was, we sent out an invitation, or, were people signed? I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I'm looking at that now, there's, I see about 30 signatures on here, and I think Brad Lungstrom, as you're on the very first one-
Yes, sir.
-all signed between 8/8 and 8/13. That showed up, I guess, at the Planning Commission, is that a valid petition? It's in the packet, so I didn't know.
It's not a valid protest petition under the statute and under our code, because it's not acknowledged or notarized.
But my understanding from you earlier was that it is part of the public record, though. It just hasn't been notarized.
So, it doesn't have a legal effect like a valid protest petition would, which would raise the, you know, the quorum for approval.
I guess, as one of the people that signed that, can you tell us why you signed it? What's the intent of it?
We do not want it. I mean, that area is such-
All these signatures represent people that don't want that.
Yes, sir, and I went through with my book, and as you see on the front page of the document, this is what we're trying to stop. You know, it was in black and white, everybody understood it. I had the same exact blueprint as this gentleman just showed you all up there. I had the letter that was supposed to, that was sent out to the other neighbors, so everybody knew exactly what they were signing exactly. It wasn't, hey, you want to just sign this piece of paper? It was for this location. I'm just asking, as a neighbor, as a citizen, please not allow this. I mean, it's a cluster in that area for traffic, it's already designed for commercial. I mean, if it was going to be residential, it should have been residential at the time of the development of that, you know.
Unless there are questions, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else who wants to need to speak in support of? I mean, in opposition to? Seeing none, close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4592, an ordinance rezoning property from GB, General Business, to MF14, Moderate Density, Multi-Family.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Motion fails, motion with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to the introduction, read the bill 4593.
I'll introduce it, oops, sorry.
Yes.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
We got an introduction, okay.
Excuse me, just a moment here, messing with my plans. Sorry. First reading of Bill number 4593, an ordinance amending the 2017-18 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of Bill number 4593, an ordinance amending the 2017-18 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Culpepper?
No.
Mayor Ross?
No.
Motion fails, motion with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to the introduction, read the bill 4593.
I'll introduce it, oops, sorry.
Yes.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
We got an introduction, okay.
Excuse me, just a moment here, messing with my plans. Sorry. First reading of Bill number 4593, an ordinance amending the 2017-18 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4755.
Now, accept the motion to remove from the table Bill number 4586.
Tom move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, thanks to Jackie and also to Cheryl, they got ahold of the Enthus Commission, and they clarified some points that I was had some concerns about, so I think we're going to be all right. So, that being said, we'll accept the motion to approve.
We already have the motion on the table?
We have the motion, we have the introduction, we have the motion, but we never voted on it.
Correct, so we just need the voting on the first reading.
So, Your Honor, I guess you say we're going to be all right, but I think you mentioned Grandview, maybe they were not doing it, so are they all right?
They do something differently than, we could have gone that route-
Okay.
-and then done something differently, but what we're doing, and my primary concern was, is I was having to fill out a whole bunch of stuff, but they thought I was the city administrator.
Oh, okay.
So, mine is not as detailed anymore.
That was above your pay grade, wasn't it?
That indeed it was. Okay, so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill number 4586, an ordinance of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, continuing the procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials first established by ordinance number 2101 pursuant to section 105, 48311, RSMO.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4556.
Meryl Annoussans, there will not be a council meeting on Monday, September 3rd, that will be moved to Wednesday, September 5th because of Labor Day. Thostapunda, tonight comes from Lucius Senica, and I quote, "While we're postponing, life